We will start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Okay. We'll now have public comments. If you have a public comment, please come up, state your name, where you live. Please note that the public comments should not pertain to anything which is already on the agenda. Those comments will be heard later in the meeting. But for now, if anyone has any public comments, please come forth.
Hello.
Good evening. How are you?
I am good. My name's Heather Kelly. I was just wondering if there was any update after the last city council meeting? Either further conversation or maybe an apology to the representative from Vermont Cares? That's going to be my question. You can answer that. Answer it, yes.
Are you talking specifically to Vermont, the Vermont Cares discussion? Or the Public Safety discussion?
No, the Vermont Cares representative.
We have not had any follow-up yet.
We've been trying to get schedules to align for a conversation or a meeting that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, but it's in the works?
Yeah.
If a meeting came, is there any plan for an apology or?
I don't have a plan for an apology.
Okay.
What specifically do you think should be the apology for?
Just the way that she was treated. I guess some of the questioning, slightly from yourself, but mainly from Mr. Hawkins. She cried when she left. It felt slightly personal in the attacks, so I just wasn't sure. It didn't seem normal for the city councils. I just wanted to make sure somebody addressed it. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jennifer Williamson. I'm a resident of the town, one of the businesses on the right here on Main Street. I just wanted to say I had a fantastic time at the tattoo convention this weekend. It was wonderful. It was the first time I spent all day downtown. I didn't even like going home Friday and just spent the entire day in all the restaurants and everything. It was just amazing. The concert afterwards at 14th Star, it was great. Until I went across the street and somebody in a pickup truck screamed out, "White supremacy, we're the KKK." And I just can't help but think about the fact that it was right after we took down the sign, "Welcome for All," and we put up the sign that says, "Welcome." We're purposely telling people it's okay to be racist here, that it's okay to other people. And I don't think that's right. And I would like to see the "Welcome for All" sign back up. Because I hear about stories where students from our schools, when they go to other schools, they have special rules about how to interact with our students because our students act so racist. And I think we need to make a point of saying like, "This is not okay. This is not good behavior and we will not condone this." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Alright, we'll move on to item number four. Zach Fike, come on up.
You gave me 45 minutes, right? I'm Zach Fike. I'm a resident here. I live on Bank Street. I'm also one of the owners of Working Star and I'm a military veteran. I hope you find this positive with so much negative going on in the community. Anybody here play tag as a kid? Alright, definitely a pastime for everyone here. It's still true to this day, tag is a big ordeal for my children. I have a son who's 11 and a daughter who's nine. Because we live so close to Taylor Park, most evenings that I have them, you could find us playing tag in Taylor Park. And with any great game of tag, you gotta have a barrier that protects you from the other person. And fortunately, but unfortunately, they use the veteran memorial as that barrier. And one evening, my daughter asked me what that memorial signified and why it was there. And as a military veteran who served in both Iraq and Afghanistan, it was simple for me. Those names represent young men from St. Albans who sacrificed their lives so that we could be here today, saluting that flag, breathing the freedom that we breathe every day. And then my son, who's very invisible, basically said, "Hey, how do we know all the names are on there?" And I found that to be kind of astonishing question for an 11-year-old, and I didn't have an answer. But through my own experience, through military research, within a matter of minutes, we discovered that not only was one name missing, but 11 names are missing from that honor roll that represent veterans who died both in service in combat or from gassings in World War I and some training accidents that happened on foreign soil. No fault to the city, the commission that established the research, the original research for the memorial back in the 80s, did a terrific job. They just didn't have the things we have access to today, and that's the internet. Some records are now available for easy review. So I'm not placing blame on anyone. I'm just trying to correct what I see as a significant issue. I think those 11 names should be added. It's very affordable. I've already reached out to help me out with the name down the street here. It's on Plouf. What is it?
Plouf Monument.
Yes. They could do it for less than $2,000,000. They would add those names to the back of the monument, just for room sake. And I think they would do a good job of it. So essentially what I'm doing is asking for a motion just to maybe approve this project and make right for those 11 names. I'm happy to discuss either here or with you individually how I concluded. I have supporting documents for those 11 names that would confirm each of those, and I'd be willing to be challenged by anyone on the work that was conducted. And I've shared some of that with Tom already, so he's seen some of the documentation as well. The Messenger has seen that documentation as well, and they wrote a nice article about it, I think, now, two, three months ago, which you can review and see some of the detail on that. Essentially what I'm presenting, unless you have any questions to me, that's all of that.
So it would just reinforce what Zach has shared. We did sit down. We went through all the paperwork, very thorough, impressive amount of time you put into it, Zach. I would also say that Zach has done other stuff through the National Guard and looking at history in terms of the military and what we have here with the National Guard. So I find Zach can be very thorough in his research. Is there anyone that would like to sit down and see the detail? Or are people comfortable moving forward if we do vote to move forward with this?
I'd be comfortable moving forward.
I'm there before and we owe those people a lot.
Absolutely.
Is there any group charge maintaining those that we have to touch base with? Or is it just the city?
It's city property, from what I understand.
I know my husband works on the Veterans Day. John Coffey is at City School. Works with the VFW on the Veterans Day celebrations in the park. And there is a group of people down there that we may want to just inform or let them know. I can't remember the lady's name.
You're talking VFW or?
There's a lady that John works with at the VFW around the honorary veterans. I'll get her name, just to inform her. I'm all for them.
I'd imagine if this is approved and we do move forward, you guys would want to make an announcement, have people involved, obviously try to highlight those 11 names that are missing. So I think that would inform everyone. And obviously maybe set a date to either do it next Memorial Day, which I think is reasonable. It gives us plenty of time to execute, inform, and to get Plouf to work on the ingredients. So that could be a great celebration for Memorial Day 2025.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to talk with you sometime. Do you have Dr.'s name?
Yes, sir.
Where is your business, 14th?
Yes, sir, 14th, sir.
Oh, up here.
The Beregus, sir, next to Planet Fitness.
Okay, maybe I'll drop off, see you soon.
Yeah, anytime, sir.
I'd like to know the names that are missing.
Yeah, Sam has my contact information, so if you could pass it on to him or give me Mr. Deckers' information.
Be kind of interesting.
Do you want to have John reach out to Zach as well?
Sure.
Just to get an overview of what it is and then?
Sure.
Have you had the discussion with the American Legion or?
Yes, when I was doing my initial research, I visited those establishments, so they were at least aware of it. Whether or not I talked to the right people, I can't confirm that. But I did go in there to just confirm what records they had, just to make sure I was very thorough and turned over every stone. Some of these are very surprising because they were announced in the Messenger that they were killed in action. Again, I'm not blaming anyone, but records are just better than they were 40 years ago. Some are very glaring and some might take some discussion. It's just a matter of how you want to justify why they're on the wall, and I can tell you why they're on the wall right now. And not all of them were killed in combat. Some were killed in like, one guy was hit by a train. But because he was in France and he was deployed, the early committees thought that that was important, and I agree with that.
Was that World War II or World War I?
World War I, sir.
World War I. I'll give you a story. I come from the town of Georgia. It was a guy that, when I was a kid, came to work for my father. He was a World War I veteran. He was born in 1878 and got drafted to age of 40. And he, the American Legion's supposed to get a stone core, never did. I called his funeral home. I knew that's where he was laid out. And I got a great stone core. Dragged it right.
That's awesome. Thank you for doing that.
I'll come up and see you. We'll have a nice chat.
Yes, sir. One guy actually was gassed, confirmed gassing, and made it all the way home to die here in town.
That sounds good.
But he was not added to the wall. One could argue, okay, he did not meet the requirement of dying on foreign land, but I would argue that he died from an instrument of war, and that was enemy gassing.
Did they have any wounds in World War I?
So none of these are for wounds. These are all for those that expired. That's a whole other topic that we could go down at a later date. You're talking possibly hundreds of people. Right now, my focus is those who sacrificed their lives per se only. And we're also doing this in other communities. About every town has this issue right now. These monuments were created 40, 50, 60 years ago, and no one really retouched them, so.
Zach, have you proposed covering the costs?
Obviously, I don't know specifics on your budget. I would love for the town to help. If not, I will use my own means. 14 Star is willing to stand up and do a community fundraiser. As you all know, we support the community. We give back as much as we can. We could do some type of a party and try to get everybody there to raise funds. But obviously, if you guys get help too, teamwork makes everything work.
Are there any park funds specific to maintenance and stuff that could be put towards that?
There's some park funds for maintenance. It usually runs dry every year, right?
Do you want to take a look and see if you? If we can come up with a portion, maybe not all of it, but at least an amount to kick it off. And see what?
Worst-case scenario, 14 Star, we'll move forward with our own fundraising campaign. And then if we make more than the goal, we'd be happy to donate the money to the city so that you guys can work on other projects. So we're happy to support you guys and girls.
Appreciate that. So Dom, you hear from Trudy with her husband's contact?
I'm just gonna hand this to Zach. How's that?
And then Dom will tell the budget numbers, and then we'll move forward.
So partnering with other organizations like the VFW could help even financially.
That's a goal, and even any business in town, really, they want to contribute. Anything else?
That's it, Zach. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate all your work on that. Thank you. Entertain a motion to leave the council meeting to the liquor control board.
I move the recess for liquor control.
Second.
Motion second. All those that favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? And now into the liquor control board.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, everyone.
Tonight, I gave you guys an update on the agenda. We are adding, along with Bubba Duffers, we are adding the Stewart shop, more of a connection piece because Stewart is taking over the Jolly Stores. So attached, you guys will have the updated agenda with Stewart's applications. Tara, if you want to come on up. Tara is the owner of Bubba Duffers. She is applying for her first, third, and outdoor consumption license. Hey, you guys. I don't know. You guys all received her application, her insurance, her meals and rooms, everything needed for her to successfully get approved to sell from her food truck down on Federal Street.
Which is amazing.
Thank you.
I've been here several times.
Oh, you have? Okay. I see a lot of people waiting to make their registration.
So you're applying for your first and third. So you're going to sell beer, wine, and spirits?
Yes.
Are you just going to do like a cocktail menu?
Mostly margaritas and beer and not so much more, I think.
Right, that's fine. And the perimeter you're looking for, is it the entirety of the courtyard?
Yes.
Okay.
So the reason why we're applying for food, for the liquor license for now, because we want to see if it will increase our revenue here for the food court, for the food truck. We have possibility to rent the lounge, but we don't want to take that on unless we know if the liquor license will increase our revenue. So we want to see how well that does before we move to the next stages, which would be opening up the lounge part.
Okay.
What would your hours of operation be?
Well, that would be between probably 11:00 and 7:00 PM, depending. We are just changing the season right now. We were open noon to eight, but because of the darkness is coming, we may be changing. 11 o'clock, maybe the start off time for here on out. It could be possibly 11:30 or noon, but nothing sooner than that.
Okay, and it would be a year-round thing?
We're trying to, absolutely. Our food truck right now has four seasons, so it's, yeah. So that's why we have plans to stay in the courtyard. They're all for winter, but that could change.
Oh, awesome.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Will you put the heaters out in the courtyard?
We do have two heaters, we do, and we have fireplaces also at our home that we can bring also. We have two more at home, so we bring four. And then we also have a gas fireplace with Ateromex furniture that we were thinking about bringing and stuff and bringing in that.
Boots, go say her name while we're booting them.
Is it there or just the big umbrella?
Just the umbrellas for it. I'm just thinking, that's not why, is it? Yeah, well, we're thinking about how people will stay for the winter to eat, but that's why it's good to have some kind of outdoor eating if you want to come and eat. The option is there, but seasonal, obviously. People are not going to sit in the freezing cold. We want you to, but we can't.
So a lot of your food is takeout?
Yes, but we do, you can sit and enjoy the courtyard and enjoy your meal as well.
And how do you control alcohol leaving the premises?
So honestly, I'm still learning the whole, because this is my first endeavor with the liquor license. So the passing of the courtyard, I believe I cannot let open containers pass my courtyard. So I have to let my guests know that you have to stay within the premises of the courtyard. We cannot leave. And I'm still learning the to-go, the drinks to-go, with the sticker to make sure that it's not tampered with. And I'm still learning as I'm going, so I have the liquor license on the speed dial in Berlin to answer any of my questions.
So you can do drinks to go. They have to be sealed?
Sealed, that's right.
All the ingredients have to be put in it with their measurements. And it has to be with food, so someone can come up?
Just come up and take a beer and actually serve with food, correct?
Yeah, and it's always a little hazy, but you're going to be responsible for, you know, if someone says, "All right, it's all to go, it's sealed," da-da-da, they go right outside your gate and poke a hole in the thing and start drinking. The DLC is going to not like that.
And how do I do that?
You have to have enough staff to control it.
To control it, to be someone that they need to mine them, okay.
Yeah, and you're going to have to have staff watching around the courtyard. You know, you're taking on a lot, a lot of extra responsibility, a lot of extra liability. So you're going to have to have staff members with eyes on the courtyard.
Now, do I really have to advertise to-go?
You don't have to do.
I can actually have.
You don't have to sell to anybody who don't want to.
Absolutely, but meaning that I don't have to offer the to-go beverages?
There's a lot of bars and restaurants that don't do that.
And like I said, I'm very open. I'm still learning. I don't want to.
No, it's not. And I'm not grilling you by any means.
This is like a huge world that I'm learning because, you know.
By no means am I grilling you. I've just done this for a long time.
I will absorb all your knowledge.
Are those signs that say like, "No exit beyond this point, whatever required," I say? Or is that just something good for people to put up?
No, you just have to have a barrier that's maintained.
I was going to say, like 14 Star, I know that they have their boundaries of this is no entry beyond this point.
Yeah, I mean, that's always good and informative, but that's not required. The requirement is, is the alcohol doesn't leave. However you facilitate that, that's what needs to happen. I guess I could have one more question. What would happen if the restaurant got rented?
So we have first dibs if we want the restaurant. We don't want the restaurant. We already own another business in town with 22 employees. No offense, we don't own that many employees in our second business. So that's why we're going for the lounge where it's not going to be still serving out of the food truck. So you'd be getting your food from the food truck, and you can go to the bar for a lounge, and then you could bring the food to the courtyard, and you can use the courtyard to mingle to both businesses. But it would be all under the Bubba Duffers' last lounge, but I would not be using the restaurant.
Okay, so right now, with this, what we approve, you'd be 100% responsible for the courtyard. If you did go into the lounge, that would be like another, you'd have to expand your, and then you'd be responsible for that building, unless they somehow blocked off, you know what I mean?
Well, if we rent the lounge part with the landmarks that I have, that we would be renting just the lounge part, not the fine dining over on the other side.
Yeah, so you'd just have to come up with a way to?
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You did great.
No questions, entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve Bubba Duffers' liquor license.
Okay, I second it.
Motion second. Any further comments? Anything from the audience? Hearing young, all those that favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes? Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for doing business as I know.
Do we all get a free meal out of this?
I don't, just I came here because I need to increase in sales.
The price is still, the prices are good. You can afford it.
Make sure your red meals are your specialty.
Your food is the cheapest one to give out.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Next on the agenda, Pat.
Sorry, I called you Stewart. It's stuck in my brain. So this is Pastor Knoki is going to be our contact for the Stewart shops, who is taking over the Jolly Associates stores that we have here in the city. So right now, we have 277 North Main and 96 Federal are the two in the city limits.
Correct. I'm surprised Stewart's gone to almost 25 years. She called long enough to come up and meet the council. You ready?
So their second-class license and tobacco license is up for renewal, so it's going to be renewed under the Stewart name, not the Jolly name, as it has been before. So Tim and I had talked, and we thought that it would be good that Pat come and meet everybody, and if you guys have any questions for them before we go ahead and approve under the Stewart.
This application says location, this is a North Main one. Is there another one for?
Yeah, there's North Main and Federal Street. Federal Street should be on there as well. They're second-class, they're tobacco, and they're tobacco companies. And everything's staying the same from what the Jollies have had over the past several years.
So Nicole, you had a start date of April 30th? That's tobacco.
Most licenses get renewed from?
Yeah, it used to be always in April, but now the state of Vermont has staggered everything, so not everybody in the state of Vermont is due on April 1st. Or they don't expire on April 1st. I'm not sure the dates on?
But if you're already in that cycle, I don't think they'll change it. It's the new businesses.
They're just trying to stagger.
That was been the Stewart's record, I guess, in dealing with alcohol in other cities?
Very good. I mean, we have a few failures out there. We do terminal stings. We do trade for every employee that's going to be registered, taken off when you're registered, until you do trade. We take it seriously. Our goal isn't to pass a sting. Our goal is to keep off alcohol out of the hands of minors. Our president, our senior, our management, people.
How does that vary honestly, how's Vermont compared to New York, other states as well?
From ICE data, I don't remember hearing of federal Vermont involved, if ever. We do this in New York, but we have nine stores in Vermont and 351 in New York, so probability is a little bit greater, but I don't have the stats on that, but I can't remember the last time I heard of a Vermont valley. I'm sure there's been one or two.
But in terms of process, how's our process compare with New York's?
I can't answer that. I don't know. I don't typically deal with that side of things. I'm just a face that they sign up here because I'm going to be here tomorrow. I know from New York State, getting through the liquor authority is difficult. They try to make it better, but it's not. It just seems like there's not enough people to process the applications quick enough. And I think here it's different because each town, each town or city approves each liquor license, so it's a little bit different for us. So I don't know which one's better yet because I haven't gone through Vermont side or seen it from my side, from my standpoint.
I will add to that. I think that the state is pretty on top of it. Just a couple weeks ago, I had to give them a call for a shop that was opening up here in town that hadn't fully been through the process yet, and the state was there that afternoon. And then they were on the phone with me within a couple of hours saying, "No, it was a misunderstanding. We have everything situated. They're on top of it. They got the business approved on their end and everybody's happy."
Dealing with the state of Vermont is much easier than dealing with the state of New York. You get somebody on the phone that day, that week, out in New York. I think they're working two days a week in the office and rushing their time. I don't think they answer the phone. It's been a challenge before COVID, and it's been certainly a bigger challenge after COVID. And I can tell you, anytime, our run- And I can tell you anytime, our, our fuel operations, our transportation, anytime we need to reach somebody, uh, over at the DMV or, or any other office over there, you're always getting somebody within twenty-four hours, and we, we appreciate that.
And when's your official takeover date?
Our plan, we don't, our plan is, I think it's twelve-nine or twelve-ten, we've got to go through, um, FTC, Federal Trade Commission, with some of our sites, just one in Vermont, no, Hinton, Manchester, Rockland, Bennington, and Alberg, um, and then we got a couple in New York where we have stores and Jolly has stores. So we're, we're waiting to hear back from them, if we need to do anything with, with our stores and their stores. So the plan is, if all goes well with FTC, the first or second week of December.
Go ahead, anyone have a question, Trudy?
Do you, Jolly's done a lot for the community over the years, does Stewart's have that same, um, you know, business model where you give back to the communities that you're in?
We get nine million a year back to our communities.
Okay.
Through.
Oh, great.
Yeah, three million from Stewart Shops, three millions from one half of the fam- it's family owned, from one half of the family, and three million from the other half. We, we pride ourselves in the communities, uh, more towards the children activities, that they do sports and, and dancing and the arts, uh, but we give back quite a lot.
That's great.
That's our culture, to give back, and it's driven, I've been there twenty-four years, and it's driven in my brain, we're gonna give back to the, the people that support us.
You're a great monument.
I can certainly see if that's something.
This isn't that kind of board.
Chad, anything?
No.
No, anything?
No.
Marie? Eric?
Please don't change the deli at North Main, they're awesome.
I don't know, your Stewart's delis are pretty good, too.
We're, we're very excited, and obviously we'll be operating out of the, uh, S B Collins, uh, building and Clark's Farm Building as well.
Great. Ready for motion?
Pat, thanks for coming in, we gotta, uh, make a motion?
Make a motion to approve Stewart Shops Corporation liquor license.
I second.
Motion by Trudy, second by Marie, any other questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let the record show that I recuse myself. Have you had any dealings with Steve Smith? He's my brother, so I'll recuse myself.
Welcome.
So, motion is approved, Pat, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Ryan.
Move this adjournance of liquor, court meeting is in the city council.
Motion come out of the, uh, liquor control board, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad, if there's any favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And we're moving on to Chip.
Ready for?
Yeah.
No, no questions, no questions.
Thank you, um. By the end of the year, we need to fix any errors that we might have found there still lingering in the grant list that we've been building since April for, for this year. And we normally find something that, uh, changes that are warranted based on technical errors or data, it's not the sort of thing that, um, we would hold, we would wait for a property owner to agree with this, it's like, it's a glaring error or omission, and we try to make sure the grant list is as accurate as possible. So, um, this year, or so far this year, what we have is the list, uh, we have two personal property records, the first two records on the list that we have discovered that actually did not exist on April of this year, so they should not have been included in the grant list, so we are recommending that be removed. We have one personal business, personal property record, uh, by the way, personal property means, uh, business is equipment that is taxed at a special tax rate, um, on the grant list. Even though it's called a personal property, it's really a business's equipment, that's, that, that's, uh, the subject. So the third one down, D L L group, the assessor's office discovered that they had internally used the wrong field of the value form to put the value on the grant list, so we're recommending that be fixed with the correct value. And then, for the rest of the records, we have a six-unit condominium, uh, development now, out at two thirty-nine, two forty-one North Main, and then Heflon Lane, which is the private drive that was created behind it. And there was an error made in how all the common land of that whole condominium complex is valued for each of the condo parcel. And all that land was still being valued in just the, well, the condo parcel that really represented the first, the, the house, that was, that's always been there, so that being a technical error, the list, uh, the assessor, assessor's office was able to go through and go through the process of taking that common land value, and then basically dividing it by six, and sharing that proration among the six condo units. And so there's one condo unit that will receive a decrease in value because the other five shares are blamed being taken out, and then each of the other units, the other five units, is getting a value increase of fourteen thousand, um, in property value, because they're finally getting their share of common land added to their parcel rate. These, uh, property owners will get, if the council approves these changes, these property owners will get a notice that their values changed, they'll still be able to go through the grievance process if they wish, but we can't really get that started until this errors and omissions form is considered tonight.
What was it, PNC thing?
That's what the name of the business was, I'm not quite sure, um, who they work.
Say anything about American Greedies?
American Greedies, wasn't that?
Uh, uh, simple, no, not, the books and things, I think books and things, if you remember that business, I think there was those two, American Greedies, I don't know.
Oh, I thought it was in, um, a shopping plaza over here had a.
Yeah, it moved over there, I think maybe.
Hallmark, Hallmark.
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Right.
That's what I thought it was, but, they've been out for a while, yeah.
Some of these tax bills are so low that the business owner will pay them because they're just so low, and then eventually they'll say, hey, wait a second, my, our location, the home doesn't exist anymore, and then they'll call, that's probably what happened in this case.
So I see where you added the fourteen thousand on the land, the deducted seventy thousand from the parent family trust.
Mm-hmm.
The one that confuses me is the Scott Mumley, everyone else is at one ninety-one, hundred ninety, hundred ninety-one thousand, and Scott's property is at forty-two seven after the change, is that a smaller condo, is it a studio, what is a, do we know?
The, uh, two of the condos are in the old house.
Okay.
Or, maybe that's, that's not a pejorative way of using the term old, the, the original house that was on the lot. And, and the Scott Mumley parcel must be one of those two units in the house, which is why it's valued separate, uh, differently than the four new units that were built in the back.
Yeah, the other one is, is up for sale, uh, in the original house, so it's on the market, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Chip?
Thanks, Chip.
No questions, entertain a motion to approve, changes as presented.
I approve that we approve the changes as presented, so the grant list.
Second, motion by Chad, second by Eric, any further questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Your, your changes have been approved, Chip? Figure here from everyone? The next item on the agenda is overview of parking changes, is that, oh, is there right there? Ready to go, ready to go.
I am here tonight to update you all on our parking overhaul that we talked about a month ago, and to keep, uh, you apprised of information that we're going to push out into the public, uh, tomorrow morning with Josh at nine AM. We are still on target for a November first go-live date, we expect five boxes of Park Mobile signs to show up here via elevator tomorrow morning, uh, and things are rolling up very smoothly, Kristen Smith and I have had one-on-one meetings with all of our parking group stakeholders in, uh, the city, so all of the individual businesses. We have set the majority of them up with fleet managers online, so they can manage their own permits remotely. Uh, and we are very excited to kick off this week our public information campaign about the change to Park Mobile in the parking garage and the Lake Street Courthouse parking lot. What you have in your packet is a draft press release that Josh and I will be talking about tomorrow, this is the, the basics of all of the information we'll be pushing out, and I wanted to give you all an opportunity to put your eyes on it, and to recall that we did change the parking rate structure in the parking garage and the Lake House Courthouse, Lake Street Courthouse parking lot, so when questions start to come in, of course, you can certainly send them over to Kristen, or to me to answer, uh, but just so that you are, have heard it twice, so you're not surprised when people start asking questions. I'd be happy to take in questions you have about the project or the rollout, or any feedback about the draft press, press release.
What's the timing on pulling up the old, uh, meters?
Uh, is that Marty on the, uh, on the Zoom as COSA? I think we are, we're looking at November first, switch it over.
Meters might stick around for a little bit.
Just in case, if someone has an issue, got you, so probably maybe sometime.
No, just in case someone has an issue?
In case we have problems with this or something like that.
No, no, we're not coming back to the meters, it just might take a little bit to get them removed.
I think with a heavy chain and enough horse power.
Yeah, plenty of those drivers are down.
What happens with, um, I know a lot of vehicles don't have plates, or they have handwritten plates, um, or the paper plates in the window that are temporary, will that, can people, how will they be able to park?
Well, all the enforcement is going to be based on license plate information, so if you have a temporary plate number or a legit, or like a permanent plate number, you'll put that into the system. Um, for those others, I don't have the answer to that question, but you get that from the parking enforcement crew.
I just see a lot of cars with no actual plates these days, so I just wondered how that would fit in.
Marty, were you trying to say something before, we actually have the volume down in here.
Oh, is that actually him on COSA? Oh, okay, still, got a new job?
Hang on.
Code name.
There we go, try, try it now, Marty.
Well, I feel like I'm talking my wife.
There, there.
Mute, mute.
Yeah.
We'll take the heck off the post in the courthouse parking lot, and probably reuse the post for our signage.
So smart. Recycle.
Marty, any salvage, uh, potential on the, uh, gates entering the parking garage?
Uh, I'm pretty sure, we will, we'll keep them on hand, but, uh, nobody banging on our doors about that.
Kiosks are getting taken out, too?
Yeah, eventually, we'll cover those for now, we'll be taking those out, taking the power out of them.
Now we have a new website, um, not sure the capability on the backend, but is it possible that a short link that redirects from like St. Albans VT dot com slash parking portal to this long site that people have to type in, that's a little bit kind of?
Well, it's one of the shorter ones.
Well, it's ambiguous, the twosite.net.
So that's the, um, I can certainly take a look at that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, actually, I'll email you so that you can tell me how to do it. Any other questions, we're so excited.
We can tell.
Yeah, yeah.
That was like, question, are you actually that excited?
I actually am, we've had some really big wins with some of our community partners where we were trying to struggle, how, we were having a struggle with, how do we, you know, you're having issues with the existing system, you have some, some needs, this is what we're proposing, as we're worrying more about how they're using parking and what their needs are, we were able to come to uh, some really positive solution for everybody, feels like their needs were met, which is great, you know, sometimes you just have to give a little, be in the middle, but, uh, just last week, we had a really big win, and, um, plus the audit's over now, so everything's good.
Are there times that we won't be enforcing?
That's an excellent question, um, Marty?
Holidays.
Holidays, per our, uh, organs.
But we will, there'll be the potential for enforcement nights and weekends as well, so we will stagger our enforcement, but there will be enforcement.
How about the two-hour free parking during the holidays?
Yeah, that was a day. Downtown, we haven't discussed that in the parking garage.
It's hard to do two-hour free parking in the garage, Sarah can speak to the.
I'd have to, if I can do. So the way Park Mobile works, uh, for anyone who hasn't used it before, you pull in, you pay upon entry, as opposed to paying upon exit. And the only way that we get your information in the enforcement systems, that we know that it's okay for you to be there, whether you're there for fifteen minutes, or two hours, or eight hours, is if you log into the app or call the form number and put in your license plate information. When you have free parking, there's no incentive to log into that app and put in your license plate information, and therefore your enforcement system falls apart because you don't know, other than manually chalking or driving around and checking when people pulled in, uh, and how long we've been there.
We can't even say like, even free parking requires registration or something, cause I know that there's been, I'm trying to remember where, at any time I had Park Mobile and did that, you still had to register, but it was like, the first hour was free.
Uh, in conversation with the Park Mobile folks, their recommendation is that we eliminate and, um, and go to, uh, pay upon entry to get, to incentivize people to, to pay for. And it's pretty cheap.
And part of the reason we're doing this is to create the revenue stream, to pay for the enhancements that everybody wants in the parking garage, so that people will park in the parking garage.
And we're having to pay a person to monitor the parking garage, not to?
That'd be the enhancement.
Oh, okay.
But we are hoping to not have to pay to repair the gates every three to four weeks, and on-street parking remains the same currently with two hours free.
Perfect.
Can we do business basis?
Uh, I would, I would just add that there's a ton of moving pieces with this parking, and Sarah has done an awesome job breaking it all in, and getting us on track, and getting us to November first. And that will be a very exciting day to see those gates come out of there.
Thank you, that means lots for Marty.
For who, Marty?
All of us.
Everybody.
So, if a business purchases a fleet account, um, are we incentivizing them to do that by giving like a discount for them or people to have and stuff, or is it just same rate?
It's same rate, they're gonna need to purchase a fleet account for businesses that already purchase permits for their employees, they now have control, um, over whose, you know, employees information, you know, if somebody turns over, they don't have to get in touch with us, fill out a new form, they can do it all online, and we have the ability to attach, uh, we're doing up to three license plates per permit, you can't have all three in at once, but if you happen to drive your spouse's car, or your child's car, a multitude of vehicles, uh, you don't have to worry about which car that proxy card is in before you roll up to the parking garage.
That's good.
That's cool. Nice.
What about long-term?
Uh, long-term parking is available, uh, so if you happen to be coming to St. Albans, hop on the Amtrak to go out of town for vacation, you can pay to park in the parking garage for up to thirty days on Park Mobile, uh, or you can always connect with, uh, actually this, this website that Eric designed, or City Hall, and purchase, um, a monthly, or, uh, I think I'm gonna put the daily passes on there as well, if people wanna buy in advance, uh, so there's a, a great web portal, uh, that you can go on and just pay, buy your permit right from your house before you come to St. Albans, so there's those options as well. We are, uh, moving, I, you may have noticed here, you may recall from last month, we don't have a twenty-four hour parking option in the Lake Street Courthouse lot, because we wanna migrate any of those mid-to-long-term parkers into the garage.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're good, Trudy?
Yeah.
Anyone from the audience, questions? Seeing none, you don't need anyone from us, right?
That's it, thank you all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. We'll move on to item number eight, which is mayor's report, we'll start with, uh, We'll start with, uh, congratulations to councilperson Marie Basset. Oh, maybe you forgot about it.
And Andy.
And Andy, fifty-two years of marriage. Looks like you forgot about it, Marie.
That's a good reminder.
A lot of hard work.
Fifty-two years you've been there.
Uh, poor guy.
So congratulations, uh, Marie. Sorry to have you at the meeting. When you, Andy could have taken you out to eat or whatever.
Well, we did lunch instead.
Couple other things, um. Just bring to attention, we get, uh, we get a lot of critique, we being the council, regarding why aren't we doing more for public safety? I wanna make sure people are aware of the fact that one of our individuals who has been, has a long record of petty theft and breaking into cars was, uh, sent to jail with bail posted at two thousand dollars. And there's an organization in Vermont called the Vermont Freedom Fund, which pays, uh, bail to get these individuals out of jail. The individual who was recently released was spotted on, uh, cameras once again trying to break into vehicles. Uh, but the Vermont Freedom Fund, we can thank for, uh, their, um, bailing folks out. Uh, and, um, sort of impacting what we're trying to do as a community, which is to, uh, get back to some source of, uh, of security in terms of our residences. And, uh, so when people say, why aren't we doing more? There's many factions against us as we try to move to make this city a safer place. And I would say the Vermont Freedom Fund is one of those. I wanna make sure people are aware of that. Uh, Chip, Seven Street Parking, uh, I thought that was no parking. It looks like it's two and a half hour parking.
Yeah, that's the plan. Looks like we haven't made the change yet.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, and then we've also learned that as, um, individuals move about town, uh, we recommend that you shut off your outdoor, uh, spigots because, um, many people are tapping into, uh, water from homes for a variety of reasons. And, um, we found that out through some cameras as well. So consider shutting off power, shutting your spigots off to, um, to prevent that, um, access to your property. I think that's all I have at this point. We'll start with you, Trudy.
Um, so the Public Safety Committee has continued to meet every couple of weeks. Um, we have a list of things that we've done since August. Personally, the number of people that I've been able to talk to and connect with, who are service providers in the community and, um, people that are trying to also address the issues that we're having, it's been really eye-opening. Actually had a nice long phone call with the, um, Vermont Freedom Fund today. And so that I, I learned a little bit more about that group as well. Um, one thing that our committee would like to do is get the Department of Corrections to come and talk with us about what happens when folks are released from the prison. We just have some questions around that. Um, is that, I don't know who to call, like, is that something?
Can work on that.
Yeah, that's because I think that's like a, that's a missing piece. Because I think that from what I'm hearing, when folks are released, they're just released and sometimes just dropped off at the Hanaford Parking Lot with no resources, no sometimes proper clothing. And I'm just curious about like what that looks like. Um, and also I'm curious about what, um, services are provided in prisons for people that are struggling with mental health, addiction. I don't think there's a lot from what I know.
We can get the contact through restorative justice, I think. Or others.
We should think about who we want to come. And if we wanted to speak to the issues that Diane Wheeler was raising when she was here as well.
Yeah. I think the more we can learn, the better equipped we'll be to try to impact some change. That's the theory.
I'm gonna get an email thread going about what the struck, what the content of that conversation looks like. And then that'll, I think, inform who should be the presenter.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, we, um, I, we had a neighborhood watch kickoff meeting at, um, in our ward, not for the whole ward, for because that's too big. And we had twenty-five families, twenty-five households show up, which we thought was really great. Um, so we're getting that up and running. Um, we have been doing cleanups. Heather's in the audience here. She's been our, our leader. Marty, we're wondering if, um, you have any thoughts about specific places we should be focusing on? I know that you mentioned the public works guys have been doing a lot of cleanup. We've been finding a lot of litter, um, not a lot of, um, actual needles over the past month and a half or so. We've been doing it maybe twenty. Um, which is, I mean, it's twenty too many, but it's not hundreds upon hundreds. Um, and I know that you guys are doing some of that work. Where should we be focusing our attention?
Any of the parks would be great. Barlow Street Park, Oakmont Park, we spent a lot of time Taylor Park ourselves. Um, but any of the parks, any of the parking lots, the courthouse parking lot, around the parking garage.
Okay.
Um, down around One Hundred Lake is often an area that we're called to pick up shopping carts and garbage and whatnot.
The garbage and cigarette butts are what I've noticed to be just out of control in the, in the city.
Marty, would you add a little leak to that as well?
Yes, yeah. Again, little leak, we keep a pretty good eye on it just because it's across from the shop. So, uh, hey, the big items we usually take care of, but.
Okay. Um, I did call, um, I did make a call to the town manager about the parking lot today. And once he realized that was in the town's jurisdiction, he thought it was parking lot for Hawksness. He, um, he'll pay more attention to that. We had a nice chat today and, um, someone on Bishop Street is just concerned that it's, um, pretty dim between Lincoln and High on Bishop Street. Just the lights feel like not, not bright enough. Is that something that you can just?
Okay, I can take a look. I can connect with our GMP contact as well and have him.
Okay.
Look at adding lights or replacing the ones out there.
That would be great. Thank you. And that's it for now.
Thank you, Trudy. Eric?
Um, with regards to the ward, we don't really have much this month, but I do have a statement I like to read. Um, recognizing that, you know, lots going on, we're working on a lot of public safety and, um, you know, community health. Um, I wanna begin by emphasizing the importance of safety and community health, which has been, you know, focusing a lot of our attention and resources on, which is amazing. It's a critical issues. It's essential that we address them head-on, uh, but as we do, we can't lose sight of some of the other things that make St. Albans traditionally a wonderful place to live. Uh, it's our sense of community. So I wanna take a moment to share my thoughts on the recent decision regarding the banner change. So I've been hearing from constituents in my ward, as well as some others, who support the message of all are welcome and are disappointed by the shift to welcome. I get where the decision to change the banner came from, but I think it's important to remember that all are welcome really, what, what it really means to our city. It's more than just words. It's a reminder that, of the community that we're trying to build and to support each other. Changing it to just welcome might seem trivial, but it actually takes away from the bigger picture that we're trying to create here. And I know a lot of work has been done, you know, in downtown around how we can say all are welcome, how we, you know, create that in, um, environment. Uh, we all know the problems we're facing, whether it's homelessness or public safety. Um, they're not gonna be solved by changing words on a sign. The message all are welcome isn't about inviting trouble. It's about building a place where people can feel that they belong and where we work together to take care of each other. It shows that we're open to being a stronger, safer and more connected community. By pulling back on that message, we may be actually missing out on the chance to build a better city. Instead of closing off, we need to double down on all are welcome, which means watching out for each other, working towards real solutions and supporting the things that help us come together. When we prioritize community care, those who are here to cause problems or maybe causing problems will be closely watched and hopefully be made uncomfortable by all the extra community watching them and either cut out what they're doing or move, or leave, I should say. Um, the banner should reflect the community that we want to be, a place that balances compassion with safety and works together for all of our benefit. So I believe that the banner should be changed back to all are welcome when we're not advertising events because I think that sentiment still matters to us.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything else.
Chad?
Um, I talked to some shop owners downtown. Um, they're pleased they're seeing a little bit more foot patrols, so that's appreciated. Did have an incident in the ward that I saw. I kinda texted you about it. Um, there was a couple of motorcyclists that were, I think they were filming each other. They were driving down the wrong side of the road on the, on the sidewalks. And these were like legit motorcycles, like crotch rockets. It was kind of a pretty dangerous situation. And they're kinda turning back and forth, um, doing laps, um, between, uh, kinda like the funeral homes in South Main. Um, I was informed there's a big fight going on, so everybody was kinda tied up in a fight at Hundred Lake. Um, but, uh, listen, I'm not an expert in law enforcement. Um, I think when something's dangerous like that's happening, someone's gotta be kind of available as a floater to, to, to take a look at it and, and pretty quickly. I mean, people walking on the sidewalk, it was, you know, I get breaking a fight at Hundred Main is important, but I don't think it's as important as a kid getting run over on the sidewalk by a motorcycle.
Did you call it in?
Yeah.
And they said?
There's, no one was available. And it's not, it's no one's fault. It's just, it was kind of a really bad time for no one to be available be- because of a fight at Hundred Main.
Safeties will never come into the city if they don't have other issues going on?
Yeah, when they get here, which is about the same time that somebody will be available. You know, so there's two pieces.
They're not right up there usually hanging out.
Yeah, I mean, they'll be responding from the next call in, in Richford or, you know. Um, there's two pieces to that, you know? One is the messaging around what they say when that calls, car, call comes in, right? And then the other is, is staffing. The, the, uh, experience coming out of the PD is things are beginning to let up a little bit. Um, as some of the new legislation is beginning to take effect and some of the people, even though they are getting let out of jail, they are spending some time in jail. And so they're beginning to be able to catch their breath. Um, you know, the chief and I had a conversation and, you know, a memo went out to dispatch about a response of, yes, we'll get theirs, uh, when we can. They're on some other calls, uh, which is different than no one's available, we're not coming. Um, so, you know, we'll be talking about staffing when we do the budget. Um, and a lot of, a lot of what, everything that we're trying to do here, from the forthcoming, you know, nuisance property ordinance to all of the proactive work that Trudy's been doing is, we're trying to get the place under control, right? It's, and it's not right now, you know, like that's what you're saying, uh, is it's a lot better than most. But it's gonna take us a year to get it under control. And we're a quarter of the way into that year. So, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with the sentiment. Police officers are a hundred grand a pop, you know? And we gotta think long and hard. And you don't, you can't go to the store and buy one. You gotta make one, right? And that's a year-long process, right? So, and you don't usually get rid of them unless your jurisdiction shrinks, right? So think long and hard about adding them and trying to figure out, are we making the best use of everybody we have? So, one of the, you know, the, the things we're looking at is, is using some of our non-sworn personnel to respond, um, to some of the calls that don't require as many as high-level certification.
Are the police responding to overdoses? Or is that rescue or fire or?
Police are always the first on the scene forever.
So I know Burlington, they're, they're having a, a different crew go to overdoses that are trained to free up the police to handle.
Is that a police crew or a fire crew?
It's a fire crew. It's like a.
So Burlington has a full-time fire department. We have a part-time fire department. And they're, you know, four times our size, right? And so, you know, developing the ability to respond makes some sense. You know, I think we, we have to all keep sharing your perspectives on this, you know, I mean, and so maybe as long as I'm in a role, I'll respond to Eric's, you know, I, that's a, that's a, that's a legitimate, obviously, perspective. We all are feels the frustration. We're all shrinking from the fire hose. We're all watching everything that we've built slowly seep away, right? And, you know, council vote, wants to vote back to change the sign, that's fine. The city manager's job is to try to outline the operations with the policy priorities of the council. And that's what I did with the sign, you know, I was, um, all are welcome except dealers, addicts and thieves seems a bit much for a sign. But that's what I was feeling when I changed the friggin' sign. So if you want me to change it back, that's a legitimate perspective. I get it. But that's where I was coming from.
I, I agree with that, but saying all, it's like no matter what you do, come in. And I, it was kind of my sentiments as well.
I, I think that if, I've had a lot of training around this as a teacher. I think that for me as like a white woman, I, I'm like, yeah, fine, you know? I, I get that, you know, I don't want dealers here. If they're part of the all, I don't want that. I don't, you know, and the people that are stealing from us and, but I think if you are from a marginalized group, what you see is maybe it's me. Maybe it's, maybe I'm not welcome anymore. Maybe it's, not everybody gets that perspective. So I think, um, I think it warrants more conversation, at least from my perspective. And, um, if, if the sign was changed, like, people need to know what the why is. Because clearly people from, you know, it's, I get your perspective. And I also, if I were a person from, you know, you know, certain, certain groups, I might say, wow, that's interesting. You don't necessarily think that it's, the drug dealers aren't the ones that are welcome. And I agree that they're not, like, I don't want them here. I don't think anyone would want them here. And I don't think a sign is going to change that. And I don't think the sign being changed, like, what happened to you is terrible. I don't think the sign had anything to do with that. Um, I don't, I just don't think so. I know you have a hand up too. Preston.
We're not there.
Um, actually I think we are, cause he's actually gonna talk to us too.
No, we're not. Eric, we're doing mayor's reports. If we want it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, Chad, you're good?
I'm good.
Marie?
Um, it's, hasn't been too bad down in my neck of the woods, actually. Um, I do have a question. Note, the street crimes unit, is that up and running now?
About halfway there.
About halfway there.
We got one out of two.
All right, okay. So any idea when that might be?
Well, it's working, you know, I mean, there's, there's activity and, and, um, you know, in some of the loan locations and they're, they're doing their thing. They know exactly what they wanted them to do.
Um, also we had a fire hydrant on our corner, uh, knocked over, destroyed, I guess, or whatever. Um, I didn't happen to be around that weekend, so it happened on a weekend, I think probably on a Saturday night. So, uh, I don't know if anybody in the neighborhood may have caught it on camera or not, but, um, it looks like the city's done something there. So I'm assuming they're gonna put another hydrant in. Um, and also a question for Marty is, um, have you heard any more about the light on that I had asked about on North Elm? Or any of the others that were? Or any of the others that were, that we had brought to your attention?
Yes, the one on North Elm, GMT is replacing. The ones on Huntington they're gonna look at, those are in the tab.
Okay, okay. But the one on North Elm?
The hydrant, we are aware of the hydrant. The hydrant was hit last weekend. Police were not notified of an accident or anything involving the hydrant. I spoke to three of the neighbors, none of whom have it on their ring camera.
Really? Ah, okay. And the, the, the light that I was talking about on North Elm, there is currently no light there, so it's not a question of replacing it. It's just installing a, a light on that hole between eighteen and twenty-two, North Elm.
Okay, there, yeah, there is a light that's down further down that they were gonna replace, but I'll have them look at installing one on that hole as well.
Yeah, they can install one. That'd be great, because it is very dark there and there's some shrubbery in there, so it really makes it a dark area. So, and I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie.
Do you have anything? Quiet tonight.
Quiet tonight, okay. So let's move on to item number ten, warrants and minutes. Entertain motions to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, one, one at a time?
Sure.
To approve the warrants?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right? Approve warrants for nine, 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 or minutes from nine, nine?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes by September ninth.
Second.
We have a motion from Marie, seconded by Trudy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have another meeting on nine twenty-four. Entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the approval of the minutes for nine twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second. Any suggested changes or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion approved.
I understand.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourned as of seven fifty-five.